Go to item four, public. Public hearing to present Venus ISD School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas report. Ms. Page?
Good evening, President Gore, Superintendent Torres, Board of Trustees. So tonight I'm going to talk about the school first rating for the 2024. This year's rating had 20 indicators used to score the districts. A total of, a total of points in 90 to 100 range will receive an A. 80 to 89 will be a B. Above standard and a total of 70 to 79 receives a C which is meets standards. Maintaining the financial health of the district and modeling accountability is imperative. Therefore, we are pleased to report that the Venus Independent School District received an A or superior achievement rating from the Texas Education Agency regarding financial operations. Additionally, the district received a score of 96 points out of a possible 100. So we missed two points on what is the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assembled assessed property value. We missed that last year as well, however, we're gaining on it. So we're only point 2248 away from getting the full 10 points on that. And as our property value increases with the new homes being built, that will help that indicator. The other indicator was the schools district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold. Again, we missed that one last year, got eight points last year again. We are point 0135 from, away from getting the whole 10 points. We're going to look at the coding to make sure that everybody is coded correctly and all expenditures are coded correctly to make sure that that is accurately reflected. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Number five, opportunity for public comment. Rosie, did we have anybody sign up? No? Okay. Go to item number six, presentation of campus reports and recognitions.
Okay, good evening. We are going to start with our student of the month. May Sardewy is a kindergarten student in Ms. Lawson's class. Little May here is just an overall rock star. She's fantastic, fun, always smiling, as you can see, helpful. She truly is the epitome of what you would want as a student on your campus. So she is well deserving of this and so we are thankful for her. So congratulations, May. Also a big transition for us is May's mom, Ms. Sardewy, Coach Sardewy is going to be transitioning to our receptionist position after Thanksgiving. So she is wonderful to have on our campus, so even more transitioning to our front office staff. For our staff and teacher of the month, so they're kind of combined because we picked Ms. Chriselda Hendrick in life skills and then also Rose Rodriguez is her paraprofessional, her aide. They are just absolutely fantastic. Never complain, don't say no. They take on every student, every challenge and they love these children as if they're their own babies and they build skills in them that they need to be successful. So I'm grateful to have both of them on campus and so they're really well deserving of this award. And I didn't write a lot in there, we're staying busy on campus. Today, we celebrated with a Thanksgiving staff potluck that was fun. And we're doing a staff underground dress up. So if you follow our Facebook page, you can see that we are doing some fun activities for the teachers and staff. Parent involvement, last week we reached out to all our parents to get thankful notes for our teachers. I think we had close to 200 notes that we printed and gave to teachers. They're outside their doors, but you know, it's, nice words go a long way, right? And so it's something that we can do that's free, that's small, to support our teachers and staff. This week, we have Thanksgiving lunch, so we're excited about that. I know last month, we hosted trunk or treat with elementary and probably had what? A thousand plus people? Maybe next year, we make it into a big community event because if we can get that many people here, that's what we want. So, thank you guys.
Okay, at the elementary school, we had our big Kahuna party bus event for the end of our fundraiser and they had a new party bus this year, the Lego bus. So they were super excited about that. And we had two large groups that went to CC's Pizza for lunch. And then we added something new to our Veterans Day. We added a Veterans Day wall and we kept that up during our reading camp out also. And we had people that didn't even send in pictures, that were taking pictures of it and just very thankful that we had recognized some of our families who had been veterans. Those are just some of the students looking at their family's pictures. And then trunk or treat, like Mrs. Ortiz said, was a huge success. And if you weren't here, the line literally went from the end of the parking lot on the visitor's side, all the way past the stop signs, the second stop sign or the second entrance for the stadium parking. It was, it was a big event. And then we finished up our penny wars for PTO. Those were just some of our PTO board members that were dressed up trying to recruit kids to bring their coins to school. And our second grade won that event. And then some of our red ribbon pictures, which seems like forever ago. Okay, and then we do have our upcoming, Thanksgiving lunch is tomorrow and super excited about that. We have anywhere between 400 to 600 people that will be at our building tomorrow for lunch. And our lunches start at 10:30 tomorrow morning, so we're going to have some turkey breakfast, 10:30. But it's a huge event that we're so thankful that they put on. And I talked to Teal this morning, she's preparing 850 Thanksgiving meals tomorrow and last year, we ran out. So we will see what tomorrow brings. And our teacher of the month is Ms. Walters. Penny Walters came to us last year. She came to us from a big school in Fort Worth and she was actually teaching high school Spanish and was ready to give herself a go at elementary school. And so we really flipped her world upside down because she was in third grade last year and she was like, wait a minute, I have to tell them how to walk in the hallway? And we're like, yes, they're not 15 and 16 years old. So that was a little bit of a learning curve for her, but she's done a great job and we moved her up to fifth grade this year. And she is very witty, she is funny, she, her, the kids get her quick wit and she has a great sense of humor and she has become an amazing example of a bulldog. And our staff member of the month was Mrs. Verdel. And our staff member of the month was Mrs. Verdell, who is our counselor. And she has just fit right into our staff, her boys have fit right into our campus. We absolutely love having them. She has taken on student council. She has also taken on lots of our SEL stuff and our red ribbon week and just wears many hats in the building. We're very thankful for her. And my student who could not be here this evening is Jaylani Diaz Gonzalez and she is a second grader in Ms. Buck and Mrs. Williams' room. And she is hardworking, always smiling, always helping her friends, always wants to help the teacher, always wants to just be a positive role model to all at seven years old and displays kindness in every part of our building. So, anyway, that is our board report for this month.
Oh, my mic hasn't been on the whole time. Okay, teacher of the month was Emily Bodie. She does an amazing job with her students, giving them the opportunity to experience the world through art. She is the most positive person I know, always smiling and happy to be at VMS. She serves on the Sunshine Committee, making sure our teachers feel supported and loved. And she does an amazing job providing calming events for our staff outside of the academic day. Our support staff of the month was Sergeant Harper. Whether it's during the school hours or beyond, he is always, he can always be counted on for student growth and support. He goes out of his way to assist staff in any capacity and that, he's often overlooked as being a support staff. And then our student of the month was Archer, and I'm going to attempt it, Oosterlink. He's the sixth grade student of the month. He is an honor student and works hard every day to be successful. He's eager to learn, ask questions and explores new ideas and experiences. His actions not only reflect his character, but also set an example for others. He's a model bulldog. So that is the middle school.
Good evening. VHS. Our teacher of the month is Ms. Katrina Juarez and she's all over the building. Everything from decorating for Dia de los Muertos to building relationships with students and the faculty. She serves as the department head and she is an excellent mentor, not only in that Spanish department, but for anyone struggling, can't find their way, she, she's always there when needed. The staff member of the month, Clint Wise. You probably remember him out in the field as a drum major. He's come a long way. When we have teachers out, I get emails because they request that he be their substitute. He's pretty strong in math. He goes in with a good attitude. He's brought back Key Club and having said that, he brought back the Hayride and I think we were all surprised because they had a large group out there that we were not expecting. So we'll plan for that next year. He brings positive energy and the thing I like about him is he's a role model for our students. So he also has recently sat down with me and he wants to be a band teacher in Venus. So we're going to see what we can do to make that happen as well. Our student of the month is Jacqueline Camarillo. And I'm pretty sure she's won this every year she's been in high school, okay? This year, she's had some tough times in her personal life, but through that, she has kept her head up and given a hundred and twenty percent, always with a smile, okay? She is a member of TAFI and she wants to be in education one day. So those programs are kind of coming through for us. Band competed in Denton and we were there to witness that and I could not be more prouder than that group with the band directors and the band. Their performance was flawless. I don't think I've ever heard them with a stronger sound than that day. They did not advance, but all in all, it was a good run this year and a lot of student participation. Our AP Spanish and newcomers went to see Frida Call exhibit in Dallas Museum of Art. Students saw different artworks in Spanish, analyzed them in Spanish. And the AP students get, got to choose a famous artwork, research, analyze and present it in Spanish. And last year, Ms. Walters' group, eighty percent of those AP kids in Spanish scored a three or higher. So that program is well on its way. Senior night, what can I say? We had each group represented there and a lot of tears. You know, the boys always, well, the boys and the girls always tell me that they're not going to cry. Well, what I've learned to do is not follow past the fifty yard line because they're going to cry, okay? It's good to see them have that self-realization of what they've put in and left out on the field, but also great to see that realization that during their last year. So for the teachers, I always tell them, are we preparing them for life after school? Not only what's in this classroom and on the, on the field. But that's always one of my favorite activities and Coach Verdell and I always talk about it and it seems like the bigger they are, the harder they cry. So that's just one of those things that we have noticed. Okay, our upcoming events. Boys and girls basketball is well on their way. They look great. Our retesting for EOC is December the third through the tenth. TSI testing is on the tenth. We have another Carter blood drive. And semester exams are the eighteenth and the nineteenth. So we're almost there. Thank you.
Go to item number seven, presentation of emergent bilingual program annual, annual report. Ms. Robyn?
There it's on. Good evening, Dr. Torres, Madam President, other officers and members of the board. I'm here to present the report to you that's required by TEA. And so we'll move on to the first slide, which is to remind you guys of what program types we offer in Venus. At our primary and elementary campus, our bilingual students, our students who participate in bilingual prog, programming are involved in the dual language immersion one way. One way simply means that the only students that participate in that program are students who are designated as emergent bilingual students. But they participate in that program in two languages and basically fifty percent of their day is in English and fifty percent of their day is in Spanish. ESL, all the way from pre-K to grade twelve for students who fall into a couple of categories, who can't be in bilingual because their first language is not Spanish and we do have those students. And students whose parents would prefer they participate in the ESL program instead of in the bilingual program. And we have content-based at pre-K, I'm sorry, pre-K through five. And content-based means every one of their core teachers, language arts, math, science and social studies, has ESL certification. Then grade six through twelve, we have ESL pullout, which means that our goal is to have every one of the English language arts and reading teachers certified in ESL. And then we also have newcomer programs at middle school and at high school. At the middle school, the students have had one period of newcomer instruction in the past. This year, they have two. And I think currently there are thirteen students that are involved in that program. Now, those are not all students in their first year. Those are students in their first, second or third year in, in the US. And then at high school, we have a new course this year that the board approved last spring when Dr. Morgan presented it. And it is a multicultural acculturation class for newcomers. And they can get state credit for that course. They can attend that course for one year only. And it is to give them lots of strategies, all the way from understanding the dress code and the student code of conduct to learning about their friends and their cultural situations. Because again, all of the students in that class are not from Mexico. There can be students in that class who are newcomers that are from Kenya, from China. And probably important to point out that our kids who qualify for the bilingual program in pre-K through grade five are not all from Mexico. We have students from Nicaragua, Venezuela, Cuba, I'm sure I'm missing something. But there are differences in cultural norms and a little bit in the Spanish they speak, even within the bilingual classrooms. So we'll go to the next slide, which tells you a little bit more about dual language immersion, the one, one-way model. Students are served in English and another language, that's the TEA definition. And they're prepared, we hope to meet reclassification five to seven years after they start in school. We only have bilingual Spanish classes here, but schools very near us have bilingual Vietnamese programs. Arlington, Mansfield have those as well. Tells you a little bit more about the model and also goes on to tell you that you may read and hear about two-way dual language. And it's run exactly the same as one-way dual in the number of minutes and the courses in which the students are taught Spanish and are taught English. But what would happen if we could ever find enough bilingual teachers? It would take double the bilingual teachers that we have. But we could have a two-way program, which allows English one families to apply their students to be in the program. So English, English one learners are learning Spanish at the same time our Spanish one learners are learning English. Cleveland's a much bigger district, but they too, it's a challenge for to finding enough bilingual teachers. So they have one campus that has two-way dual, but other campuses that have one-way dual. And that same thing is true for Mansfield and Arlington as, as well. All right, moving on. Tells you a little bit more about the content base that I already referred to, but we have teachers in ELAR that need to be content certified and also ESL certified. And content-based, we do a pretty good job of being able to, not a pretty good job, a very good job of being able to offer that at the primary and the elementary. It becomes a lot more challenging when we get to the secondary level to make sure that every English, every math, every science and every social studies teachers has their content certification plus ESL. There are boards that require that. And there have been times that I wish our board required that, but I think we all need to stop and think very carefully before we would put that into place because it, at, at the, this point in time, that would be a monumental undertaking to get that, get that taken care of at the middle school and the high school level. But let's think toward the future for that. And then next. The pullout. The kids really aren't pulled out of class to go to ESL. TEA just adopted the pullout term to mean the only class that the students have with an ESL certified teacher is English. So we can move on from that. This lets you know how many students are enrolled per grade in the dual language one way, which is our bilingual program. And so you see the numbers for each grade. What you may see that causes you to have a question is, in second grade, we have forty-six students and we have two teachers. So we have twenty-three bilingual students in each of those classes. In kindergarten, the class size is much lower because there are three kindergarten teachers. And in fifth grade, there are also three teachers serving those forty-two students. So looking at trying to find another teacher for those second graders as they move up to third is something that we already have on our radar. So that's dual language. And then of course, it's not offered sixth through twelfth. And then we go on to ESL, so two sixty in all. And now the next slide tells us about ESL and we have ESL students in every grade, four hundred forty-nine in all. The numbers are lower for ESL in pre-K through five because we do have the bilingual classes for those students to enroll in. And then when we roll from fifth to sixth grade, we have the ESL pullout from there up through grade twelve. Next slide. Is a slide you've already seen when Mrs. Camacho gave her report on assessment, final assessment results, but it's a required slide by TEA for this program as well. So you can see that ten percent of our students at a composite beginning level, that's, that's a thumbs up. And I think our goal would be to move more students from that thirty-five percent in, at the intermediate level, helping them to move up one level to advanced and helping some of the two hundred sixty-three that were, were ranked as advanced, move them up to advanced high. Because our fourteen percent at advanced high, that sort of Because our fourteen percent at advanced high, that sort of matches our percentages at the masters level for star. That's where we want to push, push for growth and higher scores. Uh next slide. But at the same time that I said that we want to push for growth. I want you to know that the state, two things happened. The state adjusted fair criteria for TALPOS. To be considered eligible to exit. So that was one very great thing that bilingual directors all across the state were happy about. They now have to be um only advanced high composite, not advanced high in all four areas, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. That really is a much, a much fairer uh. Uh a a much fairer goal to meet for for the students. And so where in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had one student in the district that exited. That's one, not one per campus, but that's one in the district, last year we had sixty-four. So that's awesome, that that is awesome. The second thing that we did was purchase um a learning platform called Summit K-12. Where the students can practice their listening and speaking skills when they're at a center or station. Whether it's um at the elementary uh uh middle or high school. And I think that was was where we gained the most cr- most traction. Next slide. Uh they want me to let you know how many student, how many teachers received bilingual ESL professional development throughout last year. And that's the number of teachers per grade level, the number of teachers in all. And um that happens during PLC meetings. Uh that happens by me going to PLC meetings and pres- presenting strategies for the teachers to use in the classroom with their students. So we'll go from there. That was our professional development plan last year and the reason it had to be so involved is because we did have to apply. For a bilingual exception and an ESL waiver and that means all of our require, our teachers required to be certified. Weren't certified on November one, when the application is is due. So you can see some of the different things and uh what, why we did them and what uh what was accomplished. So I think, I I think that is is self-explanatory. So we'll go on to the next slide. Parent involvement activities, we had a parent involvement night at the primary, at the middle, at the elementary, and at the high school. And I was really proud that um all of those were done before November one. That showed a great commitment on behalf of the principals to make that a priority. That was a a great thing and then we had our Cinco de Mayo, which is our big emergent bilingual community event. Uh that some of y'all attended, have attended in the past two or three years, we had that at high school in May. And I should say that TEA wants that reported, but those are actually federal requirements. Of districts that uh accept Title III funds, must must have these nights. So we'll go on, I think we're almost done. Mr. Martinez was a a great partner in terms of staffing. And the endeavors for recruiting that took place last year were through the Region eleven consortium. Where we have access to all of the teachers that have applied for bilingual positions. Recruiting at Nelson University, which up until this year was Southwestern Assemblies of God University. And we do some really good recruiting um there, we have gotten some really good staff members there, Tarleton and UTA. And recruiting endeavors in terms of stipends, the bilingual teachers, when fully certified, receive five thousand dollars annually. Paid over a ten-month period and the ESL teachers um uh receive five hundred dollars annually. We'll go one step forward and this kind of gives you a hint about, well, it's a definite about what happened last year. And uh a hint about what has just happened this year. Uh last year, we submitted ten teacher names on the application for the exception and the waiver. And I think it's important to point out that up until last year, you didn't have to submit the teacher names. It was just the number of teachers, but last year it flipped to um you must list the teacher names. You don't have to identify them with a TSDS number or anything of that sort. But they're looking to see how many people are repeating, which gives them an idea of how hard we're working. To help these teachers get certified. So we had ten that were submitted and uh four of those successfully obtained their certification before the end of the school year. Some are no longer with us, some were with us last year and didn't obtain their certification. But we had to submit eight names this year, but three of those have already gotten their certification um now. Uh so appreciation to those secondary teachers and to their principals. Who who let them know that it was a priority, a priority to get that done at and and at earlier time ta- on an earlier timetable. So we s- we did still have to do the exception and waiver, but we're in a better spot. And what they want is to reduce the number by twenty-five percent, both in the bilingual group and the ESL group. And we did do that, which means that they should be happy with our progress and not have many questions about the plan that we've submitted for this year. And on the final slide, I think it just gives you all the nuts and bolts and the legalities of what I was required to do tonight. And I thank you for your attention and for your listening, if you happen to have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But even better would be if the presentation left no questions that you have.
Did anybody have any questions? No, thank you very much.
You bet.
We'll go to item number eight, transportation update, Ms. Tubbs.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board, Dr. Torres, President Gore. Alright, so I'm gonna go into the transportation update, we've done a lot in transportation, we've updated some signage. Uh we now have designated um handicap spots, we've got coaches that are parking where the buses that they're taking. And so we don't have cars just kind of sitting around and possibly in the way of buses now, when we're maneuvering throughout the day. Uh the old buses, Mr. Buck made a comment, the first time I made an update, uh the old buses that were unused are now auctioned off. And we don't like, look like we're collecting old buses. Um new fuel pumps have been put in, they're up and running smoothly. Uh drivers, I haven't had any feedback from them that they can't get fuel, so that's a positive. Um some slight adjustments that we've made with the transportation, uh the high idling, things like that, sitting at the schools. Um just running our buses for, just because, uh we've been able to save about two thousand gallons of fuel, if not more. So small adjustments have been um made some big differences. Uh routes are running smoothly, let's see, we're talking with um Airwave as well to get another receiver and antenna. Um I know that some of our um mics or or some of our uh radios are not really crossing. And so we're working with another antenna and another receiver so we can relieve some of that congestion. Um with the drivers, we've revisited some safety strategies with the bus. I've talked with uh Chief Wood about doing some of the evacuations, especially when the power outage is. But there's different types of evacuations for different types of uh procedures. Um feedback from the drivers, um I'm constantly asking for feedback, what we could do differently, what we could do better, what would would help them. Uh things have been positive, so I'm getting a lot that we're moving in the right direction. Um they're they're seeing a difference, a big difference and and I'm, they're making great strides, uh they're a great team, they really are. Um I'm looking into some online training videos, um I know we don't have a whole lot of hands-on. But this will be another step as in training, safety training, uh student management. Um laws that are being changed on a on a regular basis and so we'll be looking into those. And they're all done online and I'm working with Infinity Eye and talking with them. Um so yeah, right now I'm currently using Parent Square to get my uh safety meeting out. But we're gonna be doing, adding some five to seven-minute videos on top of that to help. And now, Ms. Rosie, I have been in contact with Hudson Bus Sales, working on that very pretty wrap. And so that is what we have been talking about and uh working towards. So I have five buses in mind that I'd like to get wrapped, it says V I S D Bulldog with our Bulldog on the side. And it says excellence grows here. And so that is what we can do as far as uh as big as we can legally on a school bus. For five wraps, seventy-five hundred.
Uh I don't know if, I must have misunderstood, I I thought we were wrapping the buses so they could be used for dual-purpose like uh athletic events, stuff like that. And and weren't gonna be considered a route bus.
They are, at these, the bu- route buses that I am wrapping are used as duels, they're used on field trips, they're used as athletics, um they they are. They're so they've got multiple persons.
They still qualify with that limited wrap, being that they're mostly safety yellow?
Yep.
Or school yellow?
Uh seventy-five fifty-five. Yes ma'am. So with that'll get us some some pretty buses, get us on some of the field trips and they'll know who we are. That'll get seen, and so this company is the same one that is uh Alvarado's Arrows. And so they're very versed in what the legal size that we can get and what we can do with school buses.
Can I ask a question about the bus app that we're using?
Mm-hmm.
So I've heard some challenges where parents are trying to request a change in the app. And I've been showing like some screenshots, I've asked them to reach out to you, but when they're trying to go in and adjust, like to request a change. The change isn't on there, like if they're a bus rider like two days a week and we want them to be a car rider three days a week, they go into the app. The dropdown, there's not a dropdown to change it, so then they have to call the campus, the campus says call transportation, transportation says do it on the app, they can't do it on the app, so.
We have addressed that, the, right now the company is saying that everything's working fine, half the time our tablets aren't working, they're still scanning kids on. And as they're scanning off, they're still adding children to the the route. So we've addressed it, they're not coming back with anything. They're saying everything's been updated, everything's working fine.
So we don't have the option for the dropdown for the parents?
It should, it should be on there, yes. Um yeah, it should be on there.
Do we know as of when that fix went in?
We addressed it a few weeks ago, I'll follow up with them, but I've had some parents get on there and they're able to do it. And I don't know how, why it's working for some and not working for others, I have parents calling saying that they can follow the bus. I have some parents saying that they can't follow the bus at all. And I don't know if it's spotty uh data or areas, but yeah, it's it's a hit and miss.
So and I know you had said at the beginning of the year, we were looking to switch apps, are we still looking to do that? Are we still using the, I don't have a kid on the bus anymore, so the the app that we're currently using, so we're saying that if a parent, like if I need to go in and change my bus, my child's route to date. Whether I need her to be a car rider or a bus rider, flop, flip-flop it, I can go in and I can do that in the app and submit it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you should be able to, those that are calling the schools, the schools are calling me and then I submit to the school and we CC the parent on there. And then I've told the parent, uh moving forward, if you have trouble, just CC me and the secretary, that there's needs to be a change and we'll both respond.
Yeah, can we, can we follow up on that and just get an update next time on, to make sure that is fixed? Cause I I mean, I do have parents reaching out and I'm telling them to call the campus, campus call transportation, and they're just like in this. And I know it was the app that we were having issues with and that's kind of been our continuous issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um but just kind of in the hamster wheel of like having to call people.
Yeah.
Just to get their options.
Uh Daniel Salazar, he's actually reaching out to campuses as well to try to get something streamlined, just because we're having trouble with the the parent app.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are you still looking at the other, uh it was the beginning of the year, right, when you were looking at another um software?
We are, we are, uh still looking into TransFinder.
Yeah, if I may interject, we talked about that and the associated costs with that, um wanting to typically, if it's not working as we want it to. Then long-term, we would have to budget and plan to to make those changes, just like when we went to TransFinder. Uh or excuse me, when we went to um the current app that we're at, uh I know a year and a half ago, there was a big, there's a big cost associated at when you initially move over. And so we've talked a little bit about what that cost would be, uh and I've told her to hold off on that. Because we don't wanna, you know, that that is gonna be a pretty big associated cost and there's like three different parts to that, if you wanna talk about that piece as well that we've.
Oh, that's when we were.
All of the different pieces there, they're involved in that.
That's when we were doing the phases, yeah, so currently the first phase would be getting the program on board, we would have the parent app. You would not, they would not be able to trace or track the buses, um but if it's partially working now, we would, it would be like we're doing it now. Currently, the the tablets aren't working, they're not uh registering the kids, I'm having my, the safety procedures. I'm having the drivers physically walk the buses at the campus before they leave the campus area to make sure that there's no children on the bus or no sleepers. Uh when they get back to the the bus yard, um and so that's, so they're taking an extra measure because the the tablets aren't working. As far as registering kids on or off, uh we seem to have a problem with more of high school and middle school as they're registering and scanning on. Um the second phase would be the tablets, which is the greater cost. And then the third would be updating and getting everything streamlined and going. Um but I would go to uh the first phase where we're using and getting a a functional um uh routing system program. Uh that's easily by touch, uh very easy to use, a lot more easier than uh NFT. But it would, it would be a transition to get to where we need to be.
But we're paying a whole lot more for the program that's not working versus if we were to go to just phase one, which is pretty comparable to what we're getting now.
Correct, correct.
For a whole lot less, right?
So to go to phase one, um right now, recently, they have, I've spoken with them probably last month, right now it'd be just over eleven thousand dollars. And what are we paying now for the program that's not working, I think like thirty-two?
So I understand that things happen, uh one of TEA's top goals is to make parents an equal part, equal part in education to their children. My biggest question, listening to everybody and their concerns, how are we communicating this with parents? So if if we don't, when I, when she asked her question, Gerbi asked her question, it was like it should be, most likely it is, I think so. If if it's not working, how are we communicating with parents every day for that that parent who needs to get their child, we've told them as Venus ISD. We've told them we have a program in place that allows you to change this. And if it doesn't work, every day, how are we contacting parents to let them know it doesn't work today? Because and what are we doing about those one to five to ten to however many kids are needing to make that? Because and what are we doing about those one to five to ten to however many kids are needing to make those changes? Then they call the campuses, but the campuses are out at bus duty or the campuses aren't available or the campuses send them back to the bus department where perhaps nobody answers?
So all changes are made by noon.
Okay.
They're not allowed to make them anything afternoon, afternoon, everything is staying the same and then we will make uh changes the next day if it's a permanent change.
But her point was if the dropdown menu isn't there, they can't make the changes. So how are we communicating with all of our parents that our that our systems are not functioning correctly, therefore they cannot make changes or, I mean that's a I mean these, we want these parents to be an equal part in education, but yet we keep cutting them out of every of every step because and they're not, they're not notified. So if it's not working, that's okay, it's not, it's not your fault, it's not anybody's fault, it's just, it just doesn't work. So parents, we're sorry, a parent phone call goes out, it says, uh we're sorry, it's not working right now. If you have a change, here are the numbers we need to to contact.
Right, but it's like anything, sometime Facebook is down, sometimes Twitter's down, sometimes it just crashes. We we don't have a a date or a time that we can notify parents if they can't.
I will tell them that.
I think his, I think his question is, if it's not working, do you know if it's not working every day?
No, I don't, not until the tablets, they uh some say, and then they don't tell me until after route that the tablet's not working. And so at that point, I can't notify parents. Um I've had some parents that I've been in contact with that can't track their child, but they're receiving the notification. So if I have to send anything out for a late bus, they do have access to that, they are getting the push notifications on those.
So if a parent needs to make a change, how do they know it went through?
Uh the campus, there's an approval, the camp, person at the campus approves it.
So they get something back that says your change has been approved or your change has been?
I'm assuming so, I don't have a child in the district, I don't get, I don't have the app. I would have to contact them to find out exactly how it works, but I'm guessing that they get a push notification on anything that's being changed is made in the system.
Okay, thank you.
So our campus principals are responsible for making those changes?
Actually, there's a designated, I know at uh the elementary, there's a secretary, uh Ms. Brute does the approvals. They're in the system, so there's there's one at every campus that's uh responsible for going into and approving.
So any parent who wants to make that change, there's a procedure in place that allows them to make that change before whatever our deadline is.
Mm-hmm, I haven't gotten a call yet.
I just wanted to make sure, so you mentioned about if we were to move into phase one, right? We talked about the twenty-two thousand, eleven thousand, we still wouldn't have every feature that we have right now if we moved, if, or would we, if we moved over to TransFinder for eleven thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
They wouldn't be able to track their child on in having phase one, would they? That part's not included in there, right?
No, no, well, and sometimes right now, well, what we would be paying for for the eleven thousand, we're kind of paying for now, yeah. They wouldn't be able to track, um but they would still have the parent communication through the the app. So there is a parent app that.
For the eleven thousand?
Correct, correct.
I'm just saying if someone's gonna go in there, wanna track, we don't, we we don't have that, we would get that in phase two, well, it's
It's hit or miss.
Yeah, it's hit or miss, exactly, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
We've got out of number nine, presentation of childcare report, Ms. Page.
So I believe that Ms. Mayo has presented this um prior, so we're just gonna kind of give you an update. Um childcare statistics. Um we've been in operation for sixteen years, they have an average of twenty-five students and the capacity is sixty-five current staff, we've got a supervisor, four full-time employees and one part-time. And it just served as six weeks to twelve years. So on the revenues and expenses, and you'll notice this is still the twenty-two, twenty-three because the audit hasn't been done for the twenty-three, twenty-four. So you'll see that the net loss was a hundred and four thousand, almost a hundred and five thousand for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and I would expect similar numbers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the question posed is what if we expanded the daycare to people outside of Venus I S D? Next slide please. So the number one thing to remember is that would go into an enterprise funding source. So if that number flipped and we made a hundred thousand dollars from the daycare, that money would stay within that enterprise, that would not help us offset our deficit budget in one ninety-nine. So it would just stay in that enterprise. Likewise, if, however, on the flip side, if we lost two hundred thousand dollars, then the I S D would be responsible to make that difference up. Now, if there is a year that you had a positive balance and then a negative, then they would wash.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand that.
Can you go back one slide?
Uh-huh, uh-huh. Okay, so we had a net loss of a hundred and four thousand dollars. If we had that open to the public to bring their children and we had a positive number there instead of the negative, that would stay within the enterprise fund. It would not go against our deficit budget of our two hundred some thousand dollars.
What to, in current day state, that deficit of one oh four, are, the district is currently responsible for the one oh four, seven fifty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
And what budget is that coming out of?
The general fund.
So if it went to its own standalone, its own enterprise, essentially the district would not, we would, we would be saving a hundred and four?
No, we would still have to make up the deficit, but if you had a positive, the district would not receive the positive. It would stay within the daycare fund.
I think what they're saying is we're still at a hundred and five thousand for the last probably sixteen years, we're out that money. And so if you take that out, so we're not paying it, then we're we're not short a hundred and four, a hundred and five thousand, correct?
And we're talking about moving this, cause I wanna say the last presentation we had from Brandy was if we move the daycare to a for-profit organization versus a nonprofit, which is what it is now, they would essentially be responsible, the for-profit, of managing all of their revenues, expenses, et cetera, correct? And so the district essentially would no longer be responsible for that, it would be its own standalone for-profit agency, not like child nutrition, because child nutrition is still part of the district. From what I understood when she explained it, they would almost be separate ran for-profit.
It would still be within the district, so it would still be on our books. It would be an enterprise fund within our district funds. So if it's, if it makes a profit, that stays within daycare, if it loses money, then the I S D still pays that out of the general fund.
Okay.
Does that make, does that help?
And it just, it has to be enterprise fund, cause it's, it's, we're receiving money from outside the district, funding sources outside the district, so.
Correct.
If they have a surplus into the year, then they get, similar to K F T, they're gonna come to the end of the year and go, we gotta spend all this money by May or August, whatever. If there's a deficit, then we have to, we're gonna, we're still covering it, cause it's still our school-sponsored daycare.
Correct.
So the good in that would be if they broke even, we would save basically one point six million over the last sixteen years and a hundred thousand each year.
Yes.
And the fact of that, if both grew and the deficit grew to two hundred thousand, then we'd be doubling up our responsibility and having to cover it.
Correct.
In theory, but in theory, but it it logically, it it, the data, the numbers of kids would go up, therefore the revenue would go up and we would probably be out fifty thousand instead of a hundred and four thousand. I mean, it does, what Ms. Mayo presented, that was our, the guesstimate was we would, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't look to go full, full-blown and if it's sixty-five's our capacity going all the way to sixty-five, so we wouldn't expect to break even, but we were, we would expect that one oh four to go down to maybe forty thousand or fifty thousand, but that's what I remember us talking about was that's the benefit of us offering a a child, a childcare for our teachers. Our teachers would probably pay less than a an outside person would pay, but.
Yeah, and that's where part of that one oh four comes, I mean, it's, you're never gonna really make money doing that. Most school districts that have childcare, that's a benefit that they get for their staff and you, you're always gonna go in the red doing that.
And currently, we don't have enough, the staff's not generating enough students to cover the cost, that's why.
Correct.
And also I do know like with uh childcare, we were talking about that too, it's um if it were to go out, um you know, the hours are gonna be different too. We talked about that, you wanna elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, so if, right now, it's open from seven to four, when the I S D is open. If we opened it up to outside um people within um the area, it would be probably from six to six. Four thirty, sorry. It would be. You're welcome, and Tammy says that maybe she has one phone call a month asking for people from the outside, so it doesn't appear that there's a big need that they're calling us.
Well, and as we talked about, I think the idea was like as a benefit of being a school district, you gotta reduce rates. So the outside people would pay, I don't wanna say substantially more, but they would probably le, pay less than what they would normally pay somewhere else, but they pay more than what our teachers pay here, so when Ms. Mayo talked about, I I asked that question about whether or not that would, we thought that would greatly offset the cost of the additional hour plus some, which probably wasn't gonna get to a break-even program, but it would get us a lot closer to where we're not supplementing that quite so much.
Other um items that would need to be taken care of, would, the auditor would have to set up and review the enterprise program. State licensing standards would be different if we're having outside um students. Um an increase in licensing capacity, um local updates and requirement codes, insurance costs would go up. Um nutrition services as well. And surveys have yielded very low participation rates even for a fifth day, because they're only open when the I S D's open. So they are open the fifth day when we work a professional development day, but otherwise they're just the four days. Yeah, exactly. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got out of number ten, executive session at seven oh four P M for five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven six, five five one dot zero eight two, and five five one dot zero eight two one.
Employee that had brought up some questions just about, you know, some of the language that they'd heard in the stands coming in some of the games and stuff. And so as we had said before, we obviously want to be good role models for our kids. Some of that stuff, you know, we don't want that. Obviously, one of our pillars in our district is character. And so we work to do that. What I have done is I did meet with that individual on an individual basis and sat and visited with her and talked to her and said, hey, we take your concern serious. She said, I don't know if there's anything you can do about that per se, but I just wanted to express that concern to you. And I said, well, that's obviously something that we that we don't condone and we want people to be able to come to our games and be able to attend with children or whoever. And if someone is being inappropriate, then so be it. So did visit with her also some of the things that we've done is if you, for example, if you come to, you know, to a football game and stuff, we have communicated with our principals. I'm let Mr. Gatewood talk a little bit about this because he kind of oversees at our football games. We put some things in place and reiterated to our principals as well. They are up in the stands or they're all assigned a certain area. And so we reiterated to them, if you're hearing something inappropriate or whatever, you know, address that to the kids. You want to be able to do that. I know there's times where I've actually been at a game or my spouse has been there as well. And she, you know, turned around and kind of gave a look or something because she heard something. But we made it very important to let our administrators know when they're assigning their folks, you know, to be up there in the stands, to be over there. I did address this individual as well and I said, if there's ever an issue at a game, I think it's very important. If you hear something, find the administrator. She really didn't know. Find the administrator that said there should, we've got them spread out around and just say, hey, there's some language being used here that's not appropriate. And I can promise you all of our administrators will address that. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mr. Gatewood?
Yes, sir. We've also criminal trespass warned for individuals for the rest of the year from any of our games. So when that individual is brought to our attention, we do follow with consequences to that individual, whether it's a student or is a community member. So we have criminal trespass for individuals this past year.
Okay, just a couple other things. We are, wow, Thanksgiving is just right around the corner. We have got, as you heard earlier from the principals, we've got some great activities going on this week. We have, it's being open campuses and our parents able to be able to come and have lunch. You heard we've got several parents lined up the next couple of days to come and visit. And we are fastly approaching the end of the semester. And so there's a whole lot going on, but we definitely want to wrap up this week. And so there's a whole lot going on, but we definitely want to wrap up this week, finish strong and then hope that everyone will have a restful and nice Thanksgiving with their families. Anybody else? You got anything, Mr. Gatewood?
Yes, sir. Just going to talk about some stuff what I have coming next month. Next month, you know, we've been talking about the turf over at Bulldog Stadium. I do have three companies that will come and present to you next month. Did give them with the parameters of their proposal, their presentation, given them 15 minutes. We have Paragon Sports Construction, Sports Capes Construction and Hellis Construction will be coming here giving a brief on what they can do, put their proposal in for the football field because, you know, the turf needs to be replaced. Also, I want to thank Mr. Buck for bringing those construction companies to me. I did reach out to them and I had seven of them reply back to me. So we're setting some for January, hopefully get our kids that are not going to college, give them an opportunity to interview with those companies and get their, you know, gain some type of employment because all of our kids, I wish they were all going to college or trade school or something, but some of them are not and he's a great paying jobs that is paying a living wage. So that cup, we have seven companies interested in coming out and hiring a couple of our kids. Also, I know Mrs. Sampson asked about the supper program. High school was approved. They're just waiting on the high school to forth the list of students to project altruism. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, we will go to item number 21, board request for additional items. Next scheduled board meeting is December 16th. I do have something. I had asked about the toy drive that we've done and that was going to be checked on with the city and the school.
Yes, it is a go. Yes, we communicated with the campus on that and there's going to be, apparently we got, we're bringing that back. There's some games, we've got Stucco involved. So yes, we are bringing it back.
When is that?
I don't have the exact date here, but I'll get it to you. I don't remember the exact date and when that is.
Does anybody else have any request for anything? No. Okay, we'll go to item number 22, adjourned at 9:13 PM.